We'll call this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order, Monday, August 14, 2017, at 6:00 PM. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We'll take a motion for that.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're now down to the invocation. Councilmember Paulie.
Let us pray. Dear God, we ask that you bless this meeting and everyone here this evening. As always, we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. May you help us make wise decisions for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. We ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Paulie. We're now down to the approval of the minutes. We have two tonight, regular meeting July 24, 2017, and special meeting August 2, 2017.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes as presented from the regular meeting July 24, 2017, and the special meeting from August 2, 2017. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're now down to public presentations. There are none, and first, public comment session. Ms. Locklear, if you'd please read those names for us.
We have two speakers tonight. First, Mr. Jeff Morris, speaking on response to economic challenges.
Jeff Morris, District 2. The Chapter 11 of Westinghouse and the abandonment of the VC summer plant is obviously a significant problem for the county. And I've heard for a number of years about the windfall that we'd be getting once the additional reactors would come online, and now it seems likely, if not certain, that that extra money won't be showing up. And I'm sure council is looking at a bunch of options to address. I'm sure you're meeting with legal counsel to consider actions taken in the Chapter 11 case, and that's both wise and essential. And I assume council's engaged, counsel with an E-L, with experience in large Chapter 11 cases, and I hope even experienced in major utility bankruptcy cases. But keep in mind, having been involved in a number of large Chapter 11 cases in the past, I can tell you that whatever happens doesn't happen quickly, particularly in a case like this that has no prospect for a 363 sale, so it's going to be a long haul. I hope you're actively pursuing other options to protect and enhance the county. The major players, Westinghouse, Toshiba, their lenders, they don't care about this county, and I don't say that pejoratively, it's not their business to care about them. And I wouldn't spend much time chatting with them. On the other hand, the South Carolina utilities, I think, have a much more important presence and a much more important need for a little bit of positive press, and this might provide the county with an opportunity to be creative in dealing with those players. It seems that those folks might be persuaded to do things like create a substantial fund for retraining employees, have a fund that would permit those folks to go to places like Midlands Tech or even our own high school to take additional classes and so forth, maybe something you could do in conjunction with Newberry County. Again, a possibility. Another possibility is to take that location, and if possible, and I don't know if this is, make it one of those industrial development locations that we seem very excited about frequently in this group. It's there, and those South Carolina utilities could even be, I think, persuaded to throw in some serious money to improve and enhance that location as an industrial park. That means transportation infrastructure, but I think that those things might be a possibility. There are any number of other things, there could be dozens of other uses. I would suggest that if, and I apologize to the council if you're, and I'm sure you're already in the midst of all this, and I don't mean to repeat things, but certainly, an ad hoc committee specifically created to address this, or even some form of a manageably-sized task force, could be very helpful in giving the county new ideas that might now, as never before, be possible as solutions to what is right now not a very pretty picture. I hope that these comments in some way are helpful, and wish you the best in your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on ordinances.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. When you're going down the highway and you approach a very steep curve, particularly that you're unfamiliar with, and it's got a lot of potholes in it, what do you do? You slow down, assess the situation, take control, and don't rush through it. And I applaud you guys for doing that with the admission of the land purchase from today's ordinances. It's obvious, you've seen the curve, the potholes, and you're assessing the situation before you rush through and make a decision. Thank you for this type of leadership through this time of crisis. Stay out of the potholes. Thank you.
That concludes Segment 1.
All right. We're now down to public hearings. We'll open these one at a time. Item A, an ordinance adopting the 2015 edition of the International Building Residential Plumbing, Mechanical, Fuel, Gas, and Fire Codes as the mandatory building codes for Fairfield County, South Carolina. We'll open this public hearing at 6:06 PM. Ms. Locklear, did we have anyone sign to speak?
No one signed to speak.
Did not? All right. That being the case, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing, also at 6:06 PM. We'll open the public hearing for Item B, an ordinance adopting the 2014 edition of the Natural Electric Code as the mandatory electrical code of Fairfield County, South Carolina. Open this public hearing again at 6:06. Ms. Locklear, did anyone sign to speak?
No one signed.
All right. We'll close this public hearing at 6:06 PM and move on to Item C. It's an ordinance adopting the 2009 edition of the South Carolina Energy Conservation Code, regulating and governing energy-efficient building envelopes and installation of energy-efficient mechanical lighting and power systems in Fairfield County, South Carolina, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereof. Open this public hearing again at 6:06 PM. Ms. Locklear, did anyone sign to speak?
No one signed to speak.
Thank you. That being the case, we'll close this public hearing at 6:06 PM. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Second reading, ordinance number 684. I'll let you read that this time, Ms. Locklear. Thank you.
An ordinance adopting the 2015 edition of the International Building Residential Plumbing, Mechanical, Fuel, Gas, and Fire Codes as the mandatory building codes for Fairfield County, South Carolina.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the ordinance, ordinance number 684. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We'll now move to ordinance 685, Item B. Ms. Locklear.
An ordinance adopting the 2014 edition of the National Electric Code, NEC, as the mandatory electrical code for Fairfield County, South Carolina.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve ordinance number 685. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're now down to Item C under ordinances and resolutions. Second reading for ordinance number 686.
An ordinance adopting the 2009 edition of the South Carolina Energy Conservation Code, regulating and governing energy-efficient building envelopes and installation of energy-efficient mechanical lighting and power systems in Fairfield County, South Carolina, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees therefore.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve second reading of ordinance number 686. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're now down to board and commission minutes. We have three for tonight. We'll do all of these together unless there's an objection. Fairfield Behavioral Health Services, Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce, and Fairfield Memorial Hospital. It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the board and commission minutes in front of us as presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Now down to board and commission appointments. There are none for tonight. No old business, new business. Report from Sea Fund Road Paving Ad Hoc Committee. Ms. Goines was our chairman for that ad hoc committee, so I'll turn it over to her at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may pass it to Administrator Taylor that you've been...
Certainly. Mr. Taylor.
We did have an ad hoc committee meeting on Monday, the 7th, to discuss the formula that we use in selecting roads that are paved through the Sea Fund, the county transportation committee. It had been recommended that we review and look at possibly changing that process, that formula that we use, but in the end, after discussion, the ad hoc committee decided to move toward council and recommend that we not change, that we keep it the same as what we've always used.
Okay. That being the case, I don't see any action item out of that. We'll move on to the county administrator's report. Mr. Taylor.
First up tonight, we have Ms. Pelham-Lyles, our museum director. We've been trying to have before council, a department head to give an update on their department each council meeting. I've asked Ms. Lyles to come and speak concerning the program that she's doing in relation to the eclipse. We will hold off on the overview of the museum services because we're pressed for time tonight with meeting with SCNG afterwards, but Ms. Lyles, if you will come up.
I had a dog and pony show ready for tonight, but I'll save it for another time, add to it. But I do want to call your attention to our upcoming event, which will be, God has brought us an eclipse for Monday. We have Professor Thompson from Davidson College, who's written a grant, and we will be handing out glasses, eclipse glasses, water. We're going to have the Garden Street Park open. She's going to be walking us through the science of what's happening with the eclipse. And this will be Monday between the hours of 1:00 and 4:00, if you can come to the Garden Street Park. We hope, we understand, we're going to have a lot of people in town, so please come to that. And on Sunday evening before that, at 7:00, at the Christ Central Community Church next door to the museum, she will be speaking on the science and the history of. We have a very interesting historic fact that Windsboro in 1900 was the site of an official professional observatory, and we happen to have a photograph of that in the museum collection that we weren't familiar with, we didn't know what it was. So I've got a story about that in my newsletter, and if you'd like, I'll put these on the table over there. Anybody can grab one, or let me know if you run out and want to read the history. It's great. One other event I'd like to mention, it's a little farther off, but for Veterans Day, we've got a really fabulous exhibit, and we've done a lot of research on folks from Fairfield County who were in that war, and especially the 371st Colored Troops, I think they called it, who went to France and served admirably as soldiers with the French Army. We've got great display on that, and hope that you'll come by and see that. But in the meanwhile, think in terms of Veterans Day, which is the 11th, and it will be on a Saturday this year. We're hoping to work with all of the community groups to put on a nice parade like we used to have, and we will go and put a wreath on the monument in the Mount Zion Park. We have some speakers who have written some histories, and I hope you will all watch the newspapers for that information and attend with us. And with that, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pelham. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Thomas Martin, who's the Masonic District Deputy Grandmaster, and he has requested with his group to come to present to council a portrait of George Washington.
Again, my name is, I actually go by TJ. My name is TJ Martin. The full title is I am the District Deputy Grandmaster for the 23rd Masonic District, which covers both Chester and Fairfield Counties for the Grand Lodge of Ancient Freemasons of South Carolina. We've had this program for roughly two years, it is called Put George Washington Back in Our South Carolina Schools and also other public places. And we have placed portraits in all four high schools inside the 23rd Masonic District, which includes Fairfield Central and the three high schools in Chester County, as well as we have a portrait hanging in the Chester County complex, and also one that is getting ready to go up inside the Chester County Courthouse. Windsboro Lodge Number 11 and Ridgway Number 30 are two Masonic lodges that are both still inside Fairfield County, went in together and purchased the portrait from our grand lodge. All proceeds from the sale of this portrait goes to benefit juvenile diabetes. Now, this is a copy, an exact replica, of the Landau's portrait that hangs in the White House to this day. During the War of 1812, First Lady Dolly Madison saved the original copy when the British invaded and came in and burned the first White House to the ground. And this is the copy of the portrait, and it has a plaque on it that states, "Presented to the citizens of Fairfield County" from Windsboro Number 11 and Ridgway Number 30. And if possible, before y'all go into executive session, if we could get together with council and have a picture made, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Ms. Pietra Cruz. She's the Director of the Eau Claire Cooperative Health Center in Fairfield County here, and they have several locations, and I will let her go into the details of that, but as council is aware, we are partnering with Providence to open a new emergency room, and we also have another great partner in Eau Claire. Over the years, and we've helped fund their centers, but we look to continue to work with them and possibly expand services in healthcare maintenance and preventative care. Ms. Cruz.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Chairman Smith and Vice Chairwoman Goines and the rest of our council this evening, and of course, our audience. Thank you for having Eau Claire present to you this evening. We're very excited to share with you who we are and what we've done over the past 30, going on 37 years. So I'm going to try and compile all of that in a relatively short amount of time. Again, thank you. So our journey began in 1981 as a single pediatric office located in the Eau Claire community in Columbia, South Carolina. In 1993, we expanded to include adult services, and we became recognized as an FQHC look-alike. In 1997, we expanded our services to include OB-GYN. And in 2000, which was a huge year for us, we received our first competitive federal grant. We can continue to expand in 2002, and we added pharmacy, dental, and behavioral services to our portfolio. In 2011, we included podiatry services. And in 2012, we added to our portfolio again our migrant health, healthcare for the homeless, and our Ryan White Part C programs. Next, please. And today, we provide medical services in 26 locations across four counties in the Midlands of South Carolina. Next slide. Starting with Richland County. Richland County is the second-largest populated county in South Carolina with approximately 400,000 residents, of which 16% of these residents are LMI, or they live below the poverty level. Today, we serve about 34,000, 35,000 residents within Richland County in 15 different service sites. Next slide, please. Next, we have Lexington County, or I'm sorry. These are some of our locations that we have. Lexington County, with a population of approximately 260,000 residents, of which about 10% live below the poverty level. Lexington County, as you may know, is actually the largest agricultural farm with Walter P. Rawls Farms, and we also administer a migrant seasonal agricultural worker program in our Pillion location. And today, we serve about approximately 18,000 residents in Lexington County. And these are some of our locations. And next, we have Newberry County. And in Newberry County, there are approximately 37,000 people with about 16% living below the poverty level, and we service probably about 3,500 residents in Newberry County. Next, please. And last but not least, is Fairfield County. And Fairfield is one of our smallest-populated counties, but with the largest number of persons living below the poverty level at about 23%. And today, we serve approximately 3,000 residents in Fairfield County within three different locations. That is our Lake Monticello, Windsboro, and Jenkins, I'm sorry, Ridgway, as well as we have a school-based program in McCrory Liston. Next, please. We are also what's considered PCMH certified, and it's a model of care that we have within all of our adult sites. And these are the services that we provide across our sites, which include family medicine, internal medicine, pediatrics, developmental pediatrics, OB-GYN, as well as counseling, behavioral services, dental, podiatry, and pharmacy. Next, please. We also have special populations and area of emphasis, which include our ACA. We have an outreach and enrollment team. We have a diabetes management program, as well as a chronic disease management program. We have healthcare for the homeless, Healthy Steps, migrant health program, as well as a Ryan White Part C program. Really quickly, I wanted to share with you how our funding source is broken down and what it looks like. As an FQHC, which stands for Fairly Qualified Health Center, we apply for what's called a service area competitive grant. Now, HERSA provides us a certain amount of funding in order for us to operate, which only accounts for about 18% of our over-operational budget. So if our operational budget is up here, and what we receive from HERSA is down here, how do we fill in that gap? And this pie chart right here shows you how we make up that difference. And as you can see, 44% of our operating budget comes from Medicaid and Medicare. And what does this equate to? Well, we have what's called a UDS, or Uniform Data Systems, and it's broken down by gender, by race, as well as by age, and this gives you a snapshot of what we do. And when someone wants to find out information about us, specifically a federal agency or HERSA, they're going to pull up our UDS reports. This is like a huge report card that we have to report on every single year. So for the year of 2015, I chose 2015 because we have whole numbers, and we were able to do an economic impact study that was released in August. Our next one will be released the end of this month for 2016, but our numbers are pretty similar. So for 2015, we provided services to approximately 58,000 residents in the Midlands of South Carolina. That equated for about 192,000 encounters. So what does that mean? Next slide, please. This is what that means. What you're seeing right here in front of you is our economic impact statement. So on the green side, those are the patients that we've served. So again, we have 58,000 persons, unique persons, equated for 192 office visits, and that cost savings equated to $73.6 million. What that means is, Eau Claire alone saved $1,263 per patient. On the orange side, it's also broken down further into the total economic impact, and the impact that Eau Claire has had in the state of South Carolina. We contributed $53.2 million to our economy. Some other notable triumphs, aside from serving 58,000 unique patients, is that we strive to do other things aside from provide medical health services to our patients. What you see right here, this facility is in Pillion, and we received Audrey Nelson Award two years in a row. And what that means is, we were able to show excellence in community partnerships within Lexington County, and this was, again, a partnership with the County of Lexington, with Eau Claire, the Lexington School District. And then on the far left-hand corner, we also are involved in a myriad of other research programs, and the ladies that you see down there have been streamlining a colorectal cancer screening in partnership with American Cancer Society and have received numerous accolades for the research that they do. And last but not least, the All of Us Research Program, and I wanted to share this with you really quickly, in that Eau Claire was chosen to represent the state of South Carolina. We are one of six out of 1,400 FQHCs nationwide that was chosen to lead a pilot program here in South Carolina for what's called an All of Us Research Program. And I'd like to say that we have done all of this over 36 years without having our barriers or our challenges, but we all know that that's just not possible. So some of the challenges that we face, of course, is a stigma associated with being a community health center or an FQHC. And what do I mean by that? Unlike what you may think, we have talented physicians who are on board with us. Tonight, I do have Dr. Schleter. He is our chief medical officer, and he is a medical doctor. And again, we have a whole portfolio of physicians that are a part of our family who choose to dedicate their life to serving persons of the underserved community. So again, making sure that we're breaking down the stigma of what we are as a community health center. Interpretive services is another challenge for us. We've seen an increase in the number of Spanish-speaking populations that we provide services to. Dental services, somewhat of a challenge. I'm very excited to share with you that we have opened our dental facility in Ridgway on May 15th, so we're fully operational, just as an FYI. Transportation continues to be a challenge for us, keeping in mind the persons that we work with. A lot of times, transportation to and from their appointments poses a barrier for our patients. And then last but not least, our unengaged homeless. This is a program that we are very passionate about. We are currently located in Transitions, which is a homeless facility on Main Street, but we also recognize that there's a large portion of unengaged homeless that we still have not reached. And then moving forward, next slide, please. Moving forward, I want to share with you really quickly a snapshot of how we are moving forward in 2016 and 2018. And you can go ahead and progress, please. So quality, just real quickly, the healthcare arena has changed, and where it's not so much quantity as it is quality, the quality of service that we provide to our patients. Next. As well as our operations, we have spent a lot of time in assessing how we operate so that we can improve our efficiency and effectiveness, our productivity, that we provide healthcare services to as many people as possible in the communities that we serve, which is why we're here tonight, as well as to be financially stable, so that we continue to be strong in the communities that we serve. Next, please. And real quickly, our values, we live and breathe our values, and they're listed up there. I won't go through all of them. Next. We remain focused on our vision. And then last but certainly not least, what drives us and what keeps us passionate and we stay steadfast to ensure that we're able to move forward with our mission of providing accessible, high-quality, and compassionate healthcare in the spirit of the Good Samaritan. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you for providing services in Fairfield County, and we appreciate everything you do. Do you have a number of how many patients you serve on a daily basis in Fairfield County?
In Fairfield County, the combined number that we serve right now is a little under 3,000, and that's within our three sites, which is Lake Monticello, Ridgway, and Windsboro. And that was for the 2016 year.
Okay, that's for a year. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Just want to say thank you, because I followed your program for many years when you began on Monticello Road.
Yes.
So I know the good work that you're doing, and I'm so glad that you're part of Fairfield County and helping our citizens here. Thank you so much.
Well, definitely, it's our pleasure. On behalf of Eau Claire and our CEO, Mr. Quintav, and our CMO, Dr. Schleter, it has been a pleasure, and we have met with Mr. Taylor as well as Mrs. Dozier, that we are definitely committed to continuing to providing services within Fairfield County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I just, I want to tell you thank you, too. It's a wonderful job y'all do. I'm from Ridgway, and I'm familiar with that one, and it is very well-used, and just thank you for being all over.
Our pleasure, and thank you for the support that you continue to give back.
All right. Thank you again.
Just one other item tonight that I had. I did want to introduce Mr. Chris White. Mr. White, if you could stand for a moment. And Mr. White is the Midlands Workforce Development Director, and we are working closely with him in light of all the layoffs we've had here in Fairfield County associated with the nuclear plant and other industries. We're trying to get a job fair put together, and if you could give us the details on that job fair that you're working to put together.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. We had hoped to announce an official date and location before today, but it will probably be tomorrow before we can officially get that word out. We are working with several partners to make sure that we host the best event that we can. We intend for this to be under the umbrella of the employee SC branding, the governor's office announced the first week of the layoffs, but we intend to have this event by midweek next week. And it will be, we'd like to have minimum 40 employers come on site of the community that are hiring for jobs that are in the Midlands of South Carolina.
And you're looking to have that at the Carolina Event Center? Is that where you're...
That is, our intention is for this to be at the Carolina... That is, our intention is for this to be at the Carolina Event Center. We don't have all of the details. I think it's not entirely dry on everything, but that is our intention. And again, we hope to have the official word out on this tomorrow. Are there any questions or any comments for us? Thank you.
Appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Clerk to Council's Report. I think we do have something tonight, Ms. Locklear.
Mr. Chair, council members, just a reminder that the Fairfield County delegation office will have their grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow morning, Tuesday, August 15, at 8:45 a.m. The office is located just a few doors down from the council chambers, and the delegation would like everyone to drop by and visit.
Thank you very much, Ms. Locklear. We're now down to the second public comment session. If you could please post those names.
We have seven speakers tonight. First, Mr. Alex Farrell, speaking on zoning.
Mr. Administrator, Mr. Vice Chairman, Council Count, thank you very much for letting me talk here for a few minutes. My name is Alec Farrell. I bought a piece of property on Freeze Creek Road back in 2014. Years ago, when I was young, man, I used to deer hunt over there, and they built a lake. I do a lot of fishing, and I can't hunt too much no more. I thought it was divine problems when that piece of land come on sale, because I've always kind of wanted it for the pecan trees and the setting and the ambiance over there and the historical buildings. It's just a very nice, peaceful piece of property. I bought it with intentions of putting a trailer on it and retiring over there. Unbeknownst to me, I can't put a trailer on it. I most respectfully ask the council for variance to let me put that trailer over there. I would be a good addition to the community, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Tangi Jacobs, speaking on zoning.
Good afternoon, Chair, county council members, county administrator, citizens and attendees. My name is Tangi Bryce Jacobs from District 3. On behalf of Jennifer Moore, Chair of the Fairfield County Branch of the NAACP, and serving as First Vice Chair of the NAACP Branch, I have been commissioned by the branch in the absence of the Chair to bring before this council the issue to the denial of the rezoning request made by Mr. Farrell. Mr. Farrell contacted a member of the NAACP, and after listening to the complaint, we feel that Mr. Farrell feels that not only has his request for rezoning been denied, but his rights have been denied because of misinformation and mistakes made when the zoning of land in the county was done. This denial and his request is from a gentleman who is retiring here in Fairfield County. He stood before you and this council, saying that this is a place that he wanted to live and has wanted to live for quite some time. So the NAACP is asking that this council reconsider the denial of the request by Mr. Farrell, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on transparency.
Good evening to Council Chair, to council members. Transparency is certainly an issue, especially as it pertains to what we're going through at this particular point in time. It has been a horrible couple of weeks in Fairfield County. We went from optimism to gloom. Friends, neighbors, and over 5,000 people lost their jobs. Can we take lemons and make lemonade? Yes, I think we can, but council, you need to reassess everything. You need to table discussions of expansion, new land purchases, and building projects until you assess the money we have moving forward, and the repayment of the $24 million we owe. You need to be transparent. The citizens of this county are going to hold you accountable for the decisions you make. Yes, many things may be postponed or omitted completely, but citizens of this county must be given a chance to review your proposals and comment, so public hearings are necessary, not just in council chambers here, but out in the communities, in the center of Fairfield County, as well as the quadrants of Fairfield County. There are some commitments that need to be completed, assessed, or reassessed, but development only in the Route 77 corridor is not acceptable. Maybe it's time to review the $300,000 Strategic Community and Economic Development Plan. Think about the citizens of Fairfield County who need jobs and affordable housing. Let everyone see your vision for Fairfield County. If you fail to plan, you plan to fail.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Lisa Brandonberg, speaking on Mount Zion.
Good evening, Lisa Brandonberg, District 7. I was happy to see that Mount Zion was no longer on the agenda tonight, and if it hadn't been taken off the table, I would just urge council to take a good, long look at that property. I grew up in that neighborhood. I walked to kindergarten. You could walk back then. I love those grounds. It's beautiful. But it's not acceptable for a Confederate monument to be on those properties and the county suggesting that it be used in a capacity that would force people that find that offensive to have to come there to do their business. So should it ever come back on the table, be reminded, everyone doesn't have the same sentiment and appreciation for those grounds. It would be better if a private industry or something picked it up, because it's beautiful up there. And the town, saying that the town has the part of the lot that contains that monument, that will not fly with all of the majority of the people in Fairfield County, at least the ones I know. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and the last point about that property that is dear to my heart, the original building of Mount Zion was burned by an arsonist in 1980. Now, Everett's land on the ground, Ridgway's land on the ground, Fairfield's land on the ground, old high school. I just think it's better for the neighborhood to figure out it's R1 zoning, let them figure out how they'd like to move forward, and if and when we can ever afford to do so. This TAC building, it's on the Mill Village. The county, y'all represent the county. What will happen to this building? What will happen to this neighborhood? Everybody counts in my book, and I'd just like for y'all to review and think about it, and, you know, give some long, hard thought about who are we representing, and is everybody getting a fair shake? But thank y'all. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Ms. Darlene Johnson, speaking on It's Time for Change. Excuse me. Yes, that's correct. It's Time for Change.
Council Chair, council members, visiting residents of Fairfield County. I decided to do this on my way up here, so if I mess up a little bit and because I'm nervous, I read something today, and I'll get to that, but I'm Darlene Johnson, District 4, Greenbrier area. I'm a resident Fairfield County who has both lived here, moved away, and returned. I am a retired employee of Richland and Fairfield County Municipal Government. Fairfield County has been the most recent, having worked in planning and zoning. I am familiar with numerous comprehensive and strategic plans, none of which have been executed by the county. We recently spent a large amount of money, of taxpayer dollars, for yet another plan in light of the recent closings of Walmart, VC Summer, and soon Windsboro Mills. It's time for change. I recently, as of today, read a statement that was published in 1963, which I felt was appropriate for today, and I quote, "Who could deny that Fairfield has a long and glorious history? Who can predict what her future will become? 1963, as an industrial era now in its cradle swept over South Carolina, what part will Fairfield County play? Naturally, there will be many changes, but its people will not change. Social life will follow some of its same patterns. As in years to come, some of the niceties of life will remain in Fairfield, one of the few places in the nation where visitors still leave their calling cards at 4 o'clock." Let's move toward the implementation of the recommended plan for Fairfield County and its citizens. It's time for change. Our history does not leave us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Yvette Howard, speaking on the future of Fairfield County.
Good afternoon, Council Chairman, council members, Mr. Administrator. My name is Yvette Howard, and I live in District 7. I'm Secretary of the Fairfield County Branch NAACP, and I'm here to speak on the subject of the future of Fairfield County. With the abandonment of the much-anticipated building of two nuclear reactors in Fairfield County, and the closing of the historic Windsboro Mill, we are facing a future that will be much different than the one we were anticipating facing only two weeks ago. When the county proposed buying the Mount Zion property and securing sewer service for the I-77 area, we see that county council is willing to spend money in some areas of Windsboro and of Fairfield County while ignoring the needs of others. We are advocating for the improvement in the quality of life of all of the citizens of Fairfield County. Fairfield County Council can help through your actions on behalf of the citizens. Look at the strategic plan, the last one that was completed. That will give you a blueprint of where you can start. Again, with the reversal of fortunes, so to speak, I'm sure that you will be looking for different ways to do the projects that you were anticipating. And when you look at Mount Zion, if that's still on the table, please consider the Confederate monument that stands there on what is Windsboro property. If that is county property, we all have to go over there and do business. We all have to drive by there every day, but we can go in different directions if we want to just drive by there, but if we have county business, that's the only way we can go, is to go by this monument. So I'm here to support all of the speakers that came before me, Mr. Farrell, Ms. Jacobs, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Green, and Ms. Brandonberg. Thank you for your attention to these matters.
Thank you.
Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Lessons Learned.
Randy Bright, Ridgway, District 1. A lot of great speeches tonight. The public wants a collaborative government, and collaborative government works best. That's what democracy is all about. And obviously, we all want to be part of moving forward. But let's face it, South Carolina has taken it on the chin this last year or so, and for one main reason. The state and local agencies didn't listen to the people, didn't involve the people. I'll give you a couple of examples. Pension Act of 1999, done on a down-low. It was terrible, terrible. It wasn't a reform, it was a deform. And what was the result? $20 billion later, our pension fund is $20 billion in debt, underfunded, because the public wasn't involved. I don't need to remind you of the Base Load Review Act. Base Load Review Act caused our problems here in Fairfield, the most immediate problems. It was, again, done on a down-low with very little public input. Those who tried to get their input heard, couldn't. Environmental groups, nuclear experts, et cetera. They all said it didn't fly, won't fly, but no one listened to them. I even said it a few years ago myself, and so did others out there. Won't fly. Didn't listen to them, so what's happened? It's cost us $35 billion and counting, counting all the expenses, et cetera. Didn't listen to the people. Then here in Fairfield, we'd make a, really, it's, you know, some said $24 million. If we pay it all off and pay all the agents' fees, it's going to be about $50 million, the big bet we made on the impossible dream generated by the Base Load Review Act, known as putting two experimental nuclear reactors up at the same time. $50 million, we place a bet on. We all spoke against it, but again, done very quietly. Now, you guys weren't there, so I understand that. The key is, if we're going to move forward, we're going to have to have a collaborative effort, and you guys have opened up a bit. But one of the first steps in these collaborative efforts would be, in these ordinances, to give us more information so that we can understand and help you make a decision, so that we're not up here saying, "I told you so," but sorry, we did. If you let us involve, be involved in these decisions, let us help you see the light. We can move forward. Give us more information on these ordinances. Now, I'm not talking about when we rename a street Bunny Lane. No, I don't need a lot of information on that. But when we're going to make huge land purchases and major acts that cost a lot of money and impact all of our futures, please keep us in the loop, fully in the loop, and be involved. I think Ms. Green said it best. Be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes Segment 2.
Thank you, Ms. Locklear. We're now down to county council time. Do any council members have anything for the good of the county? Mr. Douglas?
August 29th, 27th, that's when I'm going to operate it, 29th. August 27th, we're going to dedicate the Mitford Recreation Department building from 2 to 4. Mitford Fire Department is going to cook barbecue, have slaw and beans, and anything that's left over, they're going to sell it afterwards to have a fundraiser for the Mitford Fire Department. One other thing, Ms. Bigg, though, I said that the school was burned in 1980. It was, the elementary school was burned in 1980. I was here and watched it burn, so it wasn't rebuilt after 1980. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Anyone else? Mr. Roof?
Mr. Chair, just a couple things. I want to thank everybody for the speeches they made tonight. All of them are very good, and I thank you all for having the interest to be here. But I want to give a shout-out, and I know it's his job, Davis Anderson. Again, I've called him over the last few weeks about different issues, and one, a couple of railroad crosses in Ridgway that the railroad put in an extra rail I think they're going to replace, and it's like going across a ditch. But anyway, I sent him pictures. He got that taken care of through the right sources, and so. And a couple other things, Belfield Road Bridge Repair, been calling him about that over and over, and he's been in contact with the SE DOT, and I found out in the last couple of weeks that the contract for bid is going to be let out soon, so hopefully that'll be taken care of in the near future. And also, another concern was that I've gotten a lot of calls, is the Smallwood Road and Highway 34 intersection. I know there've been accidents there in the past, and now finally, we've gotten a report now that there- now that they're going to put rumble strips and stop-ahead signs on Smallwood Road on either side, so hopefully that will protect us. And one more thing, you also, a lot of people walk in the Ridgway area, and the town Ridgway maintains inside the city limit sidewalks, but outside has grown up bad, and so Davis, again, got inmate labor, like $4 a day, brings them down here with somebody, and they really have cleaned it up good, the vines, and so they're maintaining the sidewalks for the walkers, especially on the outside city limits where they have not been maintained. And anyway, I want to thank you and all our employees for the good job they do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Roof? Mrs. Goins?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I want to say to all our citizens, thank you so much for coming out tonight, and as I listen to many of the comments, I would have to say that we are all on the same page as far as our restructuring, reconsidering where we are, how we're going to move forward. Your thoughts are beginning to, are really our actions that are already taking place. I want to thank so much our administrative staff, team, and our council team for the quick movement to recognize where we are, what's happening. Someone said that it is going to take time. It did not take, it wasn't overnight that we got to this point. It's not going to be overnight that it's resolved. It will take time, it will take patience, it will take courage, but we'll move forward, and together with those entities involved, we will have a solution to this. So thank you so much. Be patient and stay prayerful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Anyone else? All right, there being none, I'd just like to let everyone know and really echo the sentiments of other council members, especially Mrs. Goins, who just spoke, and just make everyone aware that we did have a public hearing on our agenda for tonight that did not happen. That was on the purchase of the property on I-77. I think it's exit 48. Just let everyone know that that was taken off because, as has been discussed here tonight and at the last meeting, I think I told everybody that we appreciated you being here and speaking with us and that we were listening to you. So we postponed those, at the very least, to be able to get more input, to look at them in a little bit further detail, especially in association with what's happened here over the past couple of weeks, you might can imagine, and I know a lot of people have, but we've been certainly busy, and my head has kind of been spinning, trying to keep it above water. But appreciate, again, the folks who've came in and spoken with us, and I know there's some, at least with me personally, I don't speak for other council members, agreement here and disagreement there, but at the end of the day, everything I've heard, the tone and tenor is one of cooperation and mutual respect for one another. So very much appreciate that and the way that we've been able to come together, and just want to let everyone know that I understand your role in that and very much appreciate it. Any other for council time? Seeing none, we'll move over to the next item, which is executive session. Just like to note that following, that subsequent to executive session, council may take action on matters discussed in executive session. And tonight, if approved, we'll be going into executive session for two items, receipt of legal advice, review of potential litigation, and other new legal options regarding SCANA's planned abandonment of the proposed VC Summer new nuclear units in Jenkinsville. And Item B, discussion of matters related to the proposed location or expansion of a business, and this is discussion with representatives of SCANA on matters concerning the proposed VC Summer new nuclear project in Jenkinsville. Do we have a motion? It's been moved improperly seconded to go into executive session for the reasons as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye, those opposed? Thank you. We're now in executive session.